Buenas tardes, muchísimas gracias. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Nosotros estamos en la sala de conversaciones.
Buenos días a todos. Bienvenidos de nuevo al Consejo de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Bienvenidos a una reunión del Consejo de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Para hoy, el 10 de junio de 2003. El Consejo de la Ciudad de los Ángeles se abre el martes, viernes y jueves a las 10 de la mañana. Le invitamos a que nos acompañe. Le invitamos a que nos acompañe. Podemos asistir a las reuniones en las estaciones de cable de canal 35. Podemos asistir a las reuniones en las estaciones de cable de canal 35. Podemos asistir a las reuniones en las estaciones de cable de canal 35. Podemos asistir a las reuniones en las estaciones de cable de canal 35. Podemos asistir a las reuniones en las estaciones de cable de canal 35. Podemos asistir a las reuniones en las estaciones de cable de canal 35. Muchas gracias al Consejo de la Ciudad de los Ángeles por estar en sesión. Antes de que empezáramos la agenda. Los asuntos de la agenda dejemos reconocer. Le invitamos a los dos a una presentación. Y para llevarnos el saludo a la bandera. Todos, por favor, sean.
Sean, y levanten la mano sobre su corazón. Tengo algo de ayuda aquí. Oh, es genial. Todo lo leal y dedicado. Levanten la mano sobre su corazón. Les daré un regalo. Les daré un regalo. Les daré un regalo. A la flaga de los Estados Unidos de América. Y a la República en la que se encuentra. Una nación bajo Dios. Indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos. Y les agradezco mucho. Darle una mano grande. Repite. Bien.
¿Tiene una presentación hoy?
El presidente, recordemos que el Consejo... Estábamos tratando de presentar estas revoluciones. Postumamente. Después de... La nave espacial. Pero el tiempo no permitió. El representante del Consejo. El representante del Consejo. NASA. NASA, el representante pudo estar en aquel tiempo en particular. Pero hoy estamos afortunados de tenerlo aquí. Todos estamos tristes. En plena tristeza. El primer febrero supimos que... La nave espacial Colombia explotó. 40 millas arriba. De la Tierra. La Tierra. Ellos la viven viajando 6 millones de... En ese viaje. Solo estaban minutos de la Tierra. Cuando nosotros los perdimos. En 42 años. De vuelos espaciales nunca había habido un accidente. Durante este descenso a la Tierra hasta este. Esta fue la 28a misión. La misión del Colombia y la 113a. Misión 3. Todo junto. El Colombia. Los astronautas eran un equipo. Sin hombres. Y dos mujeres. Sus entes eran diversos y ricos. En el... Su misión. Era llevar... Un experimento en el área de astronautas. Astronautas. Avance de la tecnología de avances de la salud. Tierra y Espaçosciencias. El 11 de febrero. Aquí en el Consejo de la Ciudad de los Ángeles. Estamos en una resolución de la Ciudad de los Ángeles. Resolución 41. Para conmemorar. Con tristeza. La fe de la misión del Colombia como una marca de respeto. Para los astronautas que perdieron sus vidas. Eso es una resolución. Hoy queremos presentarles a esos. Para los representantes. Dos representantes. El representante de Israel que recibió esta resolución. Y los israelíes arriba. El representante de NASA que va a aceptar el otro. Las otras dos revoluciones. Son presentes miembros de que me presentarles. A Larry Cuba. Él es el Consejo de Comunicación. Él ha sido miembro de la Corporación Diplomática. Desde 1999. Él ha viajado al mundo. Y ha servido en regiones diversas desde Nueva Delhi al sur de California. Antes de traerlo adelante. Es importante saber. Que uno de los astronautas al bordo del Colombia era israelí. El primer astronauta israelí. Que volcó y la primera persona a jugar a la sala. Se vestaba en el espacio. Su madre. Y su abuela. Eran sobrevividoras de los avocados. Por eso el Colombia. Ramón. Era un héroe para su país y para el mundo. Por favor, acepten esta resolución. Para el colonel Ramón y su familia.
(Aplausos).
Honorable Councilman Holden and distinguished members of the Los Angeles City Council, on behalf of the state of Israel and the Ramon family, I want to take you for this moving tribute. The Columbia mission symbolized the strong bond between Israel and the United States. Together the two nations, set out in the name of science, to conquer new frontiers and create a better future for humanity. Israel is an American, should pride and joy when shuttle launched. And we will learn of its tragic end, we share grief and sorrow, and mourn together with the families of the seven astronauts. For all of us, the seven astronauts, the sons of Israeli Americans, their husband, Willie McCool, Dave Brown, Laura Clark, Capone Achola, Mike Anderson, and Elon Ramon will always be heroes. For Israelis, all and Elon Ramon carried with him a special hope. Elon Ramon was the true embodiment of the Jewish people's journey during the past century. His mother and grandmother survived the Auschwitz death camp and made their way to Israel as immigrants. His father, himself a refugee from Germany, became a soldier who fought for the independence of the newborn state of Israel. From fleeing persecutions in Europe, to fighting for the right, to an independent home man, to soaring into space. This was the story of the Philan family. This is the story of Israel, this is the story of the Jewish people. As Elon himself remarked, I am kind of proud of my parents and their generation, that whatever we've been fighting for in the last century is come true. I feel I'm representing the whole Jewish people. Elon said that serving as Israel's first astronaut was part of a miracle that stretched back fifty years. As Elon sawed, we sawed with him. As he died, a part of each of us died with him. May he and his fellow astronauts rest in peace. On behalf of the people and the state of Israel and on behalf of the Ramon family, I wish to thank you and the city of Los Angeles for this moving tribute.
This president, members, also with us today, this morning, is Mr. Ed Van Nussen. He is the resident manager of the Johnson Space Center. He has a branch here in Huntington Beach, California, and Palm Dale. The manufacturer tests and modifications associated with the space shuttle, takes place here in Southern California. Mr. Van Nussen will accept the resolution for six other astronauts, the Columbia crew. The first, Mr. President, is the crew commander, Rick Husband, was an Air Force test pilot. He was the, this was, he was on his second space flight. Although he was a native of Amarillo, Texas, he had a California connection. Commander Husband received his master's in science and mechanical engineering from California State University Fresno in nineteen ninety. All right, we have the Columbia pilot William McCool, was a Navy commander from Lubbock, The Columbia was his first space flight. He was a graduate from Naval Academy, was married with three children. The next one was one of only a handful of African-Americans astronauts. Pedro Commander Michael Anderson, served as an Air Force instructor pilot and tactical officer before joining NASA in nineteen ninety-four. He traveled to Russia, near space station in nineteen ninety-eight, on his first and only other space flight. He was in charge of Columbia's dozens of science experiments. And the other was mission specialist David Brown, who was a native of Arlington, Virginia. He was a Navy captain pilot and doctor before joining NASA. This was his first space flight. Mission specialist Kalpana Chala, immigrated to the United States from India in nineteen eighty. She was the first Indian-born woman in space. She made her first space flight in nineteen ninety-seven as mission specialist in crime, robotic, and arm operator. The Columbia mission was the second space flight for her. And last but not least, Laura Clark, was a US Navy commander. This was her first space flight. She was a medical school graduate and trained in the Navy. Married with an eight-year-old child. She made her first home and raising Wisconsin. She made a home there. And now we're going to introduce Mr. Van Nussen.
Councilman Holden, that was an excellent summation. The families of NASA astronauts appreciate this tribute by the city of Los Angeles. And it's a privilege and it's my honor to accept this school. And we fully appreciate the support the city of Los Angeles has shown towards NASA's return to flight. Thank you very much.
This is Mark Van Nussen, have your photograph of all the astronauts on this Columbia flight. And he is kneeling before them. And it'd be nice if you could just focus in on that. We'll get some copies made and presented to the members of the council before he leaves. You have to do that. Thank you very much. And I might add in quotes, Mr. President, that then. All those astronauts who took the risk as they went off into space, to create new frontiers, should always be remembered and never forgotten. The first such individual was John Glenn. Became a public servant in another, in the United States Senate, and served us all well. I'm very proud that Van Nussen mentioned to me that one of my former colleagues who worked with me to use that company, sent me greetings and said that he's now with NASA and continuing his work in the space industry. So he gave my very best return. Thank my members of the council, the city of Los Angeles, for so graciously receiving and accepting these heroes and representatives of the heroes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Holden, your presentation, Mr. Pacheco.
President, colleagues, the commission, the youth. Have brought us some classes as part of the civic leadership and responsibility program. And so I wanted to have two students who are prepared to make a few comments. So I want to bring up Maria Moreno, fifth grader from Breeze Street School, and Robert Sendejas, seventh grader from Hollenbeck Middle School. So Robert, Maria, are you welcome? And thank you for participating with our commission.
With our commission, gracias. Um, hello?
Hola.
Well, I'll introduce myself. My name is Robert Sendejas. I'm a seventh grader at Hollenbeck Middle School and a program member of the SOS Leadership Program. I've been in the leadership program for two years now. When I first joined the SOS Leadership Program, I didn't realize what the purpose was or the amount of responsibility that would be given to me. As the program progressed, I realized the true meaning of the SOS Leadership Program. It is to help inspire children in our community of Bojai Heights to become leaders in our schools and in our community. And to continue their education by acquiring a college degree. And then with the knowledge they obtain, they can share it with other children in our community, which can continue the cycle of success. Our mission is also to make every student A P, which means that they will be good citizens and always do more than is expected from them. In conclusion, I would just like to say that this program has changed my life. It has made me a caring, a caring and responsible person, and I believe it will do the same for future generations. Hi, my name is Maria Moreno. I'm a fifth grader at Breeze Street School. I just want to, um, thank you for inviting the SOS students here to City Hall. I just want to say that, um, the student council has changed, um, my life by making me more responsible and helping me in my life to become more kinder and helpful. It also changed our community, to help our community with graffiti, gangsters, or anything that we can help in. It changed our school, helping our school become a better school. For example, no problems in having trouble with students writing on walls or having students drop at a school. If a student council tries to help students stay in school and not letting them reach for their dreams, a student council also means to finish strong. Thank you.
Mr. President, can all the students from Breeze Street, Hollenbeck, stand up, please? And more schools, two other schools? Oh, first grade, or first grade school, second grade? All right, you're all here. I just want to, first of all, feel very welcome here. This is your building, this is your city. Mr. Burton here, one of my colleagues, a few years more wise than I am, is also Bojai Heights kid. He went to Sheridan, he went to Hollenbeck, and then he went to Roosevelt. So I just want you to know your among friends and family, and thank you for visiting with us.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Madam Clerk, for sort of business, please.
Approval of the minutes. Mr. Burton says. Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves and Mr. Park says.
Before beginning the regulars, there is a request to continue items twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four for one day, and that would be June eleventh.
Members request to continue items thirty-two, twenty-four. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Items which public hearings have been held, items five through twenty-six.
Five through twenty-six now before us, members. Any specials?
Like to continue six for today.
A member's request to continue item number six for two weeks. That would be June twenty-four. Is there any objection? Seeing none, items six is continued. Ms. Zine. Twenty-six special. Special by Ms. Zine.
On behalf of Mr. Holden, um, special, number eight, sixteen, and a few more after we go to the next. Twenty, uh, twenty-two, are we going all the way up to twenty?
Twenty-two has been continued. What was twenty-six at this time? Okay. Okay, Mr. Holden calls items eight and sixteen special. Any other specials? Any other specials at this point? Mr. Weiss. Five.
Cinco.
Called special by Mr. Weiss. Any other specials?
Called special.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll and tabulate the votes. These close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items which public hearings have not been held, items twenty-seven through fifty-six.
And if not have a question, members of the public to address this council on these items. Therefore, we shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials? Items twenty-seven through fifty-six. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items which public hearings have not been held, items twenty-seven through fifty-six.
And if not have a question, members of the public to address this council on these items. Therefore, we shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials? Items twenty-seven through fifty-six. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, items fifty-seven through sixty are items which public hearings have been held.
Members wishing to call any specials? Mr. Parks.
Fifty-eight and sixty.
Fifty-eight and sixty called special by Mr. Parks.
Called special by Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Holden?
Fifty-nine, sixty-one, sixty-two.
Fifty-nine. Called special by Mr. Holden.
Sixty-one and sixty-two.
We'll get there in just a second, Mr. Holden. We'll get there in just a second. Uh, so fifty-seven through sixty are all called special. Next batch of items, please, Madam Clerk.
Item sixty-one through sixty-four are items which public hearings have not been held.
And Mr. Holden has asked for item sixty-one and sixty-two to be called special. Sixty-three and sixty-four will be called special, Mr. Weiss. Sixty-three called special by Mr. Weiss. Anybody wishing to call item sixty-four special? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, consult the roll on item sixty-four. Please close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item, uh, called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss.
Sir Weiss, assunto, paso.
Other members wishing to be called item number five? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes, one no.
That is approved.
Está aprobado.
Next item, please.
Item eight called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden.
A member requests the department to continue it for one day.
Members request to continue item number eight for one day. Is there any objection?
No objection.
Seeing none, item eight is continued.
Vamos a continuar.
Next item, please.
Item sixteen called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden? In your button, please. Thank you. Item sixteen? Fourth with an item five. Mr. Holden, item sixteen.
President, members, this is an outreach program for home buyers. I'd like to have some. Board on this, I think it's the document we wanted to discuss last week as well.
Do we have department staff here on the side? Is there department staff here on the side? Can we get a brief summary from you, please?
Uh, put the department to respond. We have this item, item number sixteen, and item number fifty-nine, one is denied payment for a time home buyer, and one is a virtually a grant. We explain the difference between two and whether or not it's used in the top one or the other.
Against the monies with the housing department. The Cal Home Program is a grant given to the city to be combined with our soft second program. So it's a second deed of trust loan as part of the soft second. The down payment assistance program is through Cal H F A, which is a different agency of the state, and that's a second or third deed of trust, but it's for down payment assistance up to three percent. It can be combined. The maximum on the down payment assistance is three percent of the purchase price. However, the maximum on the soft second program is the city's sixty thousand dollars per loan. And the state money is a subset of our program. In other words, if they put thirty thousand dollars, we put thirty thousand dollars for the maximum of sixty.
All right, so that's a sixty thousand dollars soft second. Plus this three percent, which is different. In addition there to, that's providing a home for two hundred thousand dollars for a time home buyer. Then, of course, that's six thousand dollars for sixty thousand. Sixty thousand dollars. And it's a free, it's a free, is that correct?
That's correct.
Interest-free, and that, what about this so-called medium income? It says something about there's eighty percent of the income, medium income in a specific neighborhood.
The requirement for all our soft second program is, the maximum income level is eighty percent of the area median for family.
Define what the area is.
The area is L.A. County.
Oh, L.A. County.
L.A. County. And the income levels are determined by HUD for family of four in L.A. County. For family of four in LA County, eighty percent equals to forty-five thousand one hundred dollars. That's for Cal Home or Soft Second.
You can't ignore him because you're gonna have both of them together, work together.
But however, for the Down Payment Assistance Program, the families, the income level is equal to approximately one-twenty percent of area median income.
One-twenty percent?
Right, which is sixty-six thousand one hundred.
Okay, then my question is, how can one be forty-five thousand and the one is sixty-six thousand? Then you work them together.
Están trabajando los juntos.
Well, those who have eighty percent or below income, they qualify for both. Those whose income is higher, they only qualify for the Down Payment Assistance.
For the sixty thousand dollars?
Uh, no, that's three percent.
The three percent.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Mr. President, that satisfied my concern for both of those programs. Item number sixteen and item fifty-nine because I could see from what's written here that they work together.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Take a vote on item sixteen, and then we'll take a vote on item fifty-nine. But before we do that...
I just want the public to know that these programs are available.
¿Cómo disimular la información a la gente de dónde están disponibles?
I beg your pardon, I'm sorry.
¿Cómo hacer una red de acceso al público para que sepan dónde están disponibles?
We have homeowner education programs. They happen at least once a month in pejorative call. We have area meetings with different neighborhoods. We have our lenders, we have brokers, we have meetings with them and training programs. We make sure they all know about it. And they try to get and marry these two programs together, including our mortgage bond program.
So you have an outreach program?
Yes, we do.
You have to go to the churches or anything like that.
Wherever we can go and explain, we go and explain.
Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to comment on the issue of the outreach. One thing I think would be helpful, and I know you do a great job in letting people know. It seems like you bypassed the council office as to getting them involved and also expressing or letting people that they have contact with to become aware of this program. And so I would just ask, is there some way that when you are unveiling the program, going out to be on the program, letting people know that you find a way to include the council offices to be a part of that outreach?
Uh, we tried in the past, and I'm sorry that you feel that. We will make sure that every council office is notified if there are any activities in their district or if we can work with your staff to make sure that your district is not advised.
Not just the district. I'm thinking about when you're talking about funding, what's available, material, and variety of things that you put out in the public. It's important that the council office has access to the same material so they can pass it out as they have different kinds of functions and make people aware of a city program. But not just what goes on in the district, but it's a funding pot for the entire city. We have printed material for distribution in several languages. We make sure that your office has copies available.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to have some insight from you. These are great programs, but the availability of units, housing that's out there for ownership. For instance, I know on Lincoln Heights in Cypress Park, two years ago, the homes were running one-twenty, one-thirty, one-fifty. Now they're up by two-twenty-five, two-fifty, two-seventy-five. And some places, it's three-hundred. These programs. ¿Cómo se prestan? ¿Para qué? La gente puede ser dueños de casas. The reason why I'm asking is that I know the city of LA itself is about just over sixty-five percent renters, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And do know that District One, over eighty-three percent are renters. So homeownership is something we need to achieve. But do these programs give applicants the ability to even qualify for units given the rate of the cost?
Uh, we are operating certain constraints imposed on us by sources of funding that we have access to. Uh, home funds, which is a primarily fund that we are using, requires us to target population at eighty percent or below area median income. At that income level, the approximate mortgage loan that a family can afford is approximately from one-twenty, twenty thousand dollars.
Hundred thirty-three?
Hundred to hundred twenty thousand dollars, plus minus some percentage.
That's what they could afford on the market.
Right. Then our Soft Second on top of that, which is about sixty thousand dollars, that brings it to hundred eighty thousand dollars. Then, if we take the Down Payment Assistance, six thousand dollars or so on top of that, that brings us to about hundred ninety, say approximately twenty thousand dollars. As prices increase, and as if interest rates go up, the families are able to afford less and less in terms of prices of houses that they will purchase. It is a serious problem. However, the development of housing has become problematic because the development cost of a property, a single-family home of approximately fourteen, fifteen hundred square feet, is greater than the sources of financing that I outlined. So therefore, a subsidy to develop housing for an eighty percent or below median income would require close to ninety thousand dollars of subsidy from the city to make it work. Because sources of funds do not reach the maximum development cost.
Right. So bottom line is, teachers, police officers, fire department personnel, librarians, people who work for the city cannot afford a home without such as at this time.
Thankfully, our mortgage revenue bond program that reaches one-twenty percent of area median income can cover some of that gap. Also, the trust fund, which now we are trying to propose, a program from monies that are made available from the trust fund for homeownership. We should be submitting a transcript shortly. Because those monies do not have a income restriction, we are freer to use that money to deal with the gap that has been created because of the source of funding constraints.
My final point, colleagues, is that I know many of us aren't that interested in this issue because perhaps we have many homeowners in our districts. The truth of the matter is, a good part of us don't have that.
No tenemos ese acceso a vivienda.
We need to push on our IS-3, IS-4 zones. We need to find a way to establish a exclusionary zone so that when we have development, we actually have units that will allow us to use these programs so that people can have access to housing. ¿Eso sería bien?
That will be accurate, yes.
So bottom line, folks, Councilmember Gru and myself will be having a joint meeting on these issues of exclusionary zoning. We need to push the envelope. We need to establish this opportunity where people can use these programs in our own city. Otherwise, the stock is just there. Muchas gracias.
Mr. Gru.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to join in some of the comments. My colleagues have made, Councilmember Parks, and also you, Mr. Reyes, and how important this particular program is. And I know it took us a little bit of time to get to this point in negotiating with the state. But the importance, and actually, Councilmember Garcetti and I were just talking about next year doing a homeownership fair large drive to win in the valley recently, and the importance of homeownership and affordable housing at the same time, and not to neglect one or the other. So I just want to come on the House Department. I know it's been a hard road to negotiate with the state to get these funds down here. But what you're hearing from many of us is it is a top priority, first-hand housing and homeownership in Los Angeles. So just ask for an eye vote on this report.
Thank you, Ms. Gru. Other members wishing to be heard on the side? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is item sixteen, item fifty-nine, I believe. Is the other program Mr. Holden referenced? Any further questions on item fifty-nine? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item fifty-nine as well. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number twenty-six called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. On this item, we need to amend. This is in regard to fifty thousand dollars for vehicle inspection for our dash project. And we want to amend it that DOT would administer that and not the contractor that currently operates the dash project to inspect the vehicles. So the request would be, amendment would be, that DOT, instead of the contractor, issue that for the inspection. And Councilmember Parks is gonna second that motion. Thank you.
Any other members wishing to be heard? Then, without objection, we consider this matter as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Mr. Burns.
I wish to be of use on item fifty-seven, I'll walk out of the room.
Okay. Let's give Mr. Burns a minute to leave chambers. Okay, Mr. Burns has excused himself. Counsel chambers.
And that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, item fifty-seven.
Mr. Fifty-seven, uh, Mr. Chair, we'd like to merge fifty-seven and fifty-eight and ask staff to come up to give a brief overview of this extension request. Could you just provide us a brief overview of what this entails and also just let us know why it's important for this extension?
Absolutely. They are Bradshaw, City General Manager, Information Technology Agency.
Deputy City Attorney.
You have two extensions before you. One is for the area that Cox provides cable services for, for the city of Los Angeles. The other is in the Comcast areas for the city of Los Angeles. These were actually forwarded to the ITGS Committee in July after the Board of Information Technology Commissioners recommended extensions. These extensions in these two areas allows our city to maintain all of the contractual obligations under both of the franchisees in these areas, both Cox and Comcast. It's important to renew these extensions as we are going through renewals for overall cable franchises for the city of Los Angeles.
So these trains offices, these for legality? That's correct. Okay. I'd ask for an eye vote on these two items. It's important that we have these extensions so they can go forward on the formal renewal process. And I ask for unanimous vote on moving forward so that the city will reduce the potential liability without having these contracts in place.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Members, for clarification, items fifty-seven and fifty-eight are before us. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved.
Next item, please.
Item number sixty called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks. Item number sixty. Do we have the staff come up, please?
Tenemos el equipo, venga, por favor.
Gloria Stevenson-Clock from the Community Development Department, Councilwoman.
Good morning. I'd just like, this is primarily for public consumption, is that many people that I've brought into were not aware that we had such a program. They would coordinate the day labor issue in the community. So I just, we have two contracts before us. If you could just, for public consumption, give us an idea of what the duties are we expect from these contractors and what the service areas are. And I have a couple of other questions after you give us that information.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We are asking for an extension of two day labor programs. They are Chirla and Edepstha. These are programs that are experienced in mediation and also in providing services to the day labor population, assisting them to get jobs and get connected with individuals who are interested in having certain types of labor done and brought in the very smallest projects. And in this way, we are operating a public safety program, helping to assist the neighbors, the businesses, and the individuals in the area to have a smooth relationship as these jobs are brought to bear and are implemented in the community. And these two takes place in the area of hardware and Home Depot type facilities. If the community had a concern about a recent development, Home Depot, and they wanted to get this service in the community, what is the process? The community can contact the Community Development Department, and we can investigate the site that is at issue. We do have the two contracts, services, and funding resources set aside for community mediation. And we can do that on a citywide basis. There are six sites that are already approved, and three that are in the making. One of those has been selected, and two of those are being negotiated at this time. But we can meet with the Home Depot and other business enterprises, and we can meet with the community and assist in mediating the issues that are taking place out there.
When they meet with Home Depot and other type companies, do they negotiate strategies citywide or only for a particular location?
We generally focus on specific locations, but we can meet and discuss specific issues and suggest some alternative strategies and look at ways that we can work within the confines of the two contracts that we have approved.
And then when future RFPs go out, how do we connect the RFPs with the problem areas?
The RFP that is being contemplated right now will come back in the next four weeks, and it is going to address the approved sites. So there will be no, nothing in this RFP that would make for an expansion of sites, but that could be done through the budget process that you go through from time to time.
I'd like to give you two sites as we go forward and look at them. Recently opened, Home Depot at the Chesterfield Square, Manhattan Place, and Lawson. It's a growing problem in the state of San Jose. One that is not in the city, but shows the impacts of the cities, Fairfax and Lawson. And another recently, Home Depot. The boundary lines have a store in the county, but the city line is just east and south of that store. So we can look at those for future involvement. We do get a lot of complaints from those two locations.
I am familiar with those two, and we will do so.
Okay, gracias.
Mr. Gru.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I appreciate that Mr. Parks called this special today. This is an item that we have all found that the day labor program has been very successful. And we all would like to see more of them. And in certain areas, it may not be a full-blown, I know it's part of my district, I don't necessarily need a full-blown day labor program, but outreach to particular areas may become hotspots and be able to provide offers of assistance for individuals. And this contract today allows us, colleagues, to include in the RFP, as I think you mentioned, Gloria, the, some of the facts that we found, some of the results of reviewing the successful or other items within those contracts in the last couple of years. Because the day labor program has been, how long was it? Great than ten years, actually. Started in the harbor, I think, is what I'm talking about.
It did start in the harbor, I believe it was over ten years, over twelve years. And I think it's a way, again, to protect not only the labors themselves, but the people who come and would like to have a day labor work in their community. It's a good protection for both. So this extension, and we want to make sure that we don't extend it any longer than this three months, which Gloria, I know you know, so that we can move forward with these contracts and make sure that when the RFP comes out, it takes into consideration those results of the study here in Los Angeles. So just thank you, and it will come back and look at, as Mr. Parks talked about, all the areas that we see where there are some priorities. Because, again, we're shifting demographics. We really want to make sure that where we're, these day labor sites are really dealing with those that are particular to a community where there might be other resources. Thank you, Mr. President.
Gracias.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank Council President. Most Home Depot sites, have they been allowing these programs to function within their properties? That you're aware of.
In some cases, we are utilizing the property, and we have agreement with them to pay for the utilities and not have to pay for the space. And we do have a cooperative relationship, but there are meetings where there are a lot of juntas, discussing various issues of liability and so forth. So, there's still more work to be done.
I was going through experience over at Cypress Park, with Home Depot style, that we had to actually make it as part of the agreement, the talent process, to make sure the facility was on site. Actually, that was a sewer line and utility. They have a line of drainage and utilities to let the site function so that it can be treated as human beings and certain levels of integrity and decency. What I want to thank Home Depot publicly for is their participation and support in this effort. But I just want to emphasize that the impact is a direct connection with the presence of Home Depot and how we mitigate, how we create conditions that relieves the kind of pressure that you see right outside of these facilities is important to maintain when we want to look at how we improve quality of life. So, emphasizing those points is something that's very important, I believe, to our council. But it's just important to the community folks who have to drive through and deal with, in some cases, almost order harassment when folks are in their face, wanted to, uh, figure out how to make a living. And it's a contradiction because here we are trying to provide good means to a job as opposed to be now, you know, doing other things. At the same time, though, we have to have an environment that is going to be safe and clean for everyone. So, it's a real balance. And I just want to thank you for your good work, your hard work. We've been doing this for, since ninety-six, ninety-seven, at the Home Depot site over at Cypress Park. And, um, I think over on Westlake, we're looking at the other Home Depot site. So, hopefully, we'll move forward with that as well. Thank you.
Mr. LeBanc.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi. Just want to ask a question. Have you had any, uh, meetings with Home Depot executives at all on this issue?
I have not, but there was a recent meeting that took place. I'm not sure which site it was, but there was one where I can get that information to you. Do you plan to meet with them to ask for more assistance from them in that regard?
I know, uh, Home Depot is a very dedicated enterprise, dedicated corporation. They just did a wonderful new soccer complex in the city of Carson, uh, and their Olympic Training Center. But I think it'd be incumbent if I could request that you and maybe the director of planning for the city of Los Angeles, Mr. Con Howell or his designee, meet with executives from Home Depot. And, Ed, I don't know if it would be someone from your planning, but meet with executives from Home Depot just to... As you say, they create this great opportunity to, uh, have enterprise and to serve and sell, but also be involved here, the director of planning and, uh, this office, meet with executives from Home Depot to see what the long-range commitment is. Mr. Garcetti can speak to it more eloquently, but in the district of South of mine, Mr. Garcetti, there's an impacted overwhelm in the neighborhood and another commercial enterprise operated by twenty-four hour Home Depot, which we support as a business, as an enterprise, which we support for the employment that they give, which we support for the opportunity in this part of the twenty-four hour town. At, uh, St. Andrews and Sunset, but at the same time, the impact that takes place. So, I'd love to see some kind of formal meeting and to see what kind of solutions we all can bring together. In the north end of what I call the Brooklyn area, but at what a village along San Fernando Road, across the street is the city of Glendale, they created a little spot adjacent to San Fernando Road and worked in cooperation with that. So, I think it's a giant impact. Because one of the tough things on the day labor program is sometimes people drive and people actually walk right up to their cars. And the safety factor, the temptation, the fear factor that happens, that some who are not familiar with this type of free activity does provide some, uh, concern by those people. So, I would appreciate if you could get back to me too, because I take a special interest in this too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray.
I just want to echo a lot of the support and praise, particularly for the Community Development Department on this particular program. In West LA, we also have one. And although I really applaud the idea of this, your, the bond chat about looking at some of the larger commercial uses that go in, like Home Depot, and almost make an automatic request through the planning process, that when they go in and have this kind of wholesale goods, uh, construction paint, et cetera, that they look to carve out a little space in their parking lot for a trailer to be worked through with the community development and some of the independent agencies, the nonprofit agencies that work like this. But I would just like to also let members know that it doesn't only need to work with a, uh, a related commercial interest. We have the site in West LA that was built on surplus Caltrans property on a street called, uh, Caltrans Boulevard, which had, for years, been up and down the boulevard for about eight blocks, eight places where day laborers were picked up. Now, they have a trailer, a site, an organization, a driveway where people who are doing hiring can come right in and pick up people. The programs, when they work well, have a non-competition on the part of the laborers who come in and just pick random numbers and get selected on their numbers. They have classes going on in the trailers while they're there. I think it really is a, a very, very, uh, good program that does the work of providing jobs, providing information where neighborhoods are sometimes troubled by what they see is folks just lingering around and those folks really are just trying to become workers and laborers and part of the process. That this is a really great program. I'm happy to see the contract extended. But I do think we, with the experience that we've had now under our belt, we can look to advance the program, maybe in a, in a kind of way so that when it is related to a development that goes in, that it's a part of a condition, a development project, a development program, that the impact can always be almost be presumed to occur and a solution be part of the ongoing relationship with the applicant for the development. So, I think it's a great program and, uh, I'm glad it's sort of being spread around and there's more and more interest.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Um, I think we've had this in committee, I've already spoken about it, but I just wanted to echo what Mr. Reyes and what Mr. LeBanc were talking about. And maybe even put in a formal instruction in this motion, I don't know if he has a want to, that we encourage Home Depot and other, um, home improvement areas that are going to attract the day laborers to be part of a solution either financially or, um, uh, I guess structurally. So, that we actually get that as a formal policy directive. Because I've had a lot of meetings with Home Depot. They can be a great company, but something kind of is getting lost in the mix there too, where when they're forced to a new development, sometimes the developers are helping us create those worker centers. But as, as a company, they certainly get the benefit of these day laborers, but in places like Hollywood, it's the residents that get the spill-off effects and the police really can't enforce it unless there's a day labor center, they say. It just gets too difficult. So, for instance, in Hollywood, we're looking at a place right across the street that's actually indoors. And we want Home Depot to be part of that solution too. So, maybe we could put it in, Mr. LeBanc, as a formal direction, that we encourage Home Depot and other home improvement sources to be part of the solution of looking at day laborers either financially and/or structurally in future, uh, programs that we put forward for the day labor center. If I could just take a minute, too. I think, uh, they're the largest generator of this challenge. And other sources. We thank them for their commitment to the community, for what they do and all the other opportunities. But see how we could partner with this, because I'm sure they would like to see it. So, we're looking for the safety there for those day laborers and for the customers. And they've said it's a business issue, I mean, where their customers sometimes feel almost to the point of intimidation, sometimes with the more aggressive individuals, not the less aggressive. And there's a lot of people just trying to work, there's that congregation and no oversight where there is a criminal element that comes in and things like that. So, this just allows us to do that. So, I would move that we actually put that as part of the instruction, just so we can have it on the record as a formal policy directive of the council. Thank you.
Is there any objection? Seeing none, we'll have that accepted as a friendly amendment.
Mr. President, colleagues. The, uh, Home Depots in, uh, third district, one has a ready labor center, which seems to work very well. And there are a couple of other, which aren't working well at all. They haven't been very cooperative to establish day labor centers and mainly on Roscoe, near Canoga, Jase, New York. We've received a number of complaints. Additionally, the city attorney is taking action against Home Depot for not securing the spray paint as required by LA City ordinance. The concern I have is it seems some Home Depots are more cooperative than others. And while some are receptive to the day labor centers, which I think are appropriate, and help not only the labor force, but help the community, other locations don't seem to be very cooperative. Have you found that some locations are willing and other locations don't really want to participate in the activity?
Well, we have found some uneven, um, response and I think perhaps the recommendation to go to the executive level perhaps will help to balance that out.
Because I know that in my district, which we have a major public, I personally sent letter to the corporate office, the city attorney's office sent letter to the corporate office, we received, no response. It continued to happen where they were not securing the spray paint. We, uh, city attorneys now filing criminal charges on Home Depot for that violation of the municipal code, as well as the lack of cooperation, at least the specific locations I mentioned. Not willing to work with us at all on day labor centers. So, if we look around the city and we find which ones are cooperative, which ones aren't, uh, maybe the corporate level has to come down on the local managers and mandate. Additionally, they're establishing one in the Fallbrook Center, they're building a new, uh, new Home Depot. And there's great concern in the community about day laborers that tend to congregate locations. So, all I'm concerned about is we have some uniformity, that the people who want to work have an opportunity to work and not negatively impact the community, because it does negatively affect the community. They don't have restrooms, they don't have trash receptacles, and it really creates blight in the community. But the people who want to work, I have great respect for them. The problem is when the Home Depot, specific locations don't want to cooperate, and the corporate level doesn't want to help cooperate. And I don't know what sanctions we can impose to try and establish a reasonable quality of life in those specific, because each Home Depot that I've seen, has a congregation of day laborers. And while some seem to have a site, or some other, uh, others show their shoulders and it's not a problem, but it's become a problem for me, a problem for the neighborhood councils and the people that live there. So, the issue of, personally sending them letters and lack of cooperation from the corporate level, I would encourage that, and we can give you powers of those letters that we've sent. I just don't know if, um, that uneven reception, what we need to do to encourage them, since it's one of their responsibilities and our responsibility to maintain quality of life in the community. So, I just want to share that with you, the concerns that I have out of the third district that we're standing about.
Thank you. We will follow up on that and get back in contact with you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hold.
Mr. President, members, the area that I represent, the past sixteen years of day laborers have been providing a service, yes. And at the same time, have been some problems, the gathering in the neighborhood and doing things that are unhealthy, as you say, they have no toilets. And so, we try to provide those. The neighbors have complained repeatedly at Conoco and Pico. And so, when the process of developing the property, with one of the big boxes of Pico Plaza, we said, you're going to have on-site, on-site, a day labor facility. And we had negotiated with the developer, and they said, yes, we'll do it. It's a good thing, for each of us who have that responsibility or partnership, one of those big boxes, say that as you put your product inside of your store, you're also going to accommodate a day laborer facility, because they generate that kind of environment in those specific areas. Now, one of the things that does happen is that we can control influx of drugs in the area. Because what happens is that the drug dealers infiltrate day laborers and they get rid of their product that way. That's been discovered. If it's inside the facility, such as Home Depot or others, then of course, you're going to have better control over the dispensing of drugs and illegal drugs. Because that's what they've been able to do anyway with. So, if you start arresting them, the drug dealers say, well, I'm just a day laborer. But they all know who they are. And so, it's one way of cleaning up the area in terms of getting rid of some of the guys who are, uh, selling drugs. But I would say that it's a good idea, we should require, make it a mandate, program, that the big boxes accommodate a section of that development for day laborers. And I think that's what you're proposing.
I believe that was included in the motion.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Ray.
Last and final time, the, uh, this is an extension for three months, am I not correct?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, colleagues, five-month extension. Colleagues, the issues that are before us is when we have program funds to deal with these concerns for five months. I think there's a real need to understand that, we need a stronger nexus of how we look at these concerns and find a source of revenue for operations of these centers. These centers have been surviving on block on funds. We all know block on funds are diminishing as the months go by. After these five months, there will not be any resources left to operate these centers. So, it behooves us to look at how we create relationship, Home Depot, ALI PD, the neighborhood councils, I mean, we have to find a resource base for operating, for being able to fund operations of these centers. Because after five months, this expires, am I not correct?
Yes, it's, uh, three months from now, so it'll be September. So, it'll be September.
So, come September, we're not going to have money to be able to manage these centers at these specific sites. So, either through my colleague, Councilmember Garcetti, there's a committee, or through housing, wherever we find finer grants, or to look at a creative approach with Home Depot, what to do with security issues, because it does impact their business. Has there been any thought as to what we're going to do after five months?
There are funds set aside in the consolidated plan for the continuation of the program, for the existing six sites and the three new sites that are being added. So, that money is there for, um, the continuation of the existing sites. There will be an RFP that comes back within the next three weeks to the ACD committee. And, um, that, that RFP will select new providers, will select providers to carry the program on for the remainder of the consolidated plan year, which would take us through March.
I do know we should, from the point of view of the men and women in blue, patrol the area around that park. They made it very clear to me, Councilman, there is a problem here. There is a crime element there. We're not sure how to deal with it. How to control it. There's a nexus with city funded programs, there's a relationship with Home Depot. I would like to suggest that perhaps look at an approach factoring in the ALI PD and security matters here. Is there any way we can do that with this RFP? Or is that something we do with the program?
There are no, there are no new funds being added to the RFP. The budgeted amounts, if they are maintained through the city budget process, would be the same as what we've operated in the past, about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per site. Um, if we were to take any funds away from that, it would reduce the amount of service that the agencies could provide to the day laborers without adding additional funds. But we could negotiate that with ALI PD to determine whether there could be something collaborative to be done that would not require additional funding.
That would be, I believe, a great approach to a real problem. We can't single hit the assignment anymore. These are real issues and we can bring that to life with time, perhaps we can come up with more approaches and solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Other members wish to be heard on the side. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Thirty-nine.
Fifteen, si. That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number sixty-one, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Hold.
Mr. President, members, I'd like to have a report on sixty-one. I guess sixty-two as well. Someone can come forward and tell us about this transfer. Responsibility. From the...
Porque sentimos nuestra obligación de la policía. Y la comparación entre este y los lugares específicos. No están dispuestos a trabajar con nosotros en los centros de trabajo. Si miramos por la ciudad y encontramos cuáles son cooperativos y cuáles no. Tal vez el nivel corporativo tiene que bajar a los locales. Además, establecer uno en el centro de Fallbrook. Están haciendo otro. Y hay preocupación para la ciudad acerca de... Un lugar de cochato. Lo que estamos preocupados es que tenemos algo uniforme. Que los que quieren trabajar tienen la oportunidad de trabajar. Y no negativamente. Porque tiene un efecto negativo en la comunidad. No tienen restos, no tienen residuos receptivos. Y realmente crea daño en la comunidad. Pero los que quieren trabajar, yo tengo mucho respeto por ellos. El problema es cuando los hogares específicos no quieren cooperar. Si el nivel corporativo no quiere ayudar a cooperar. No sé qué sanciones podemos imponer para tratar de establecer... El de vida de resonable en las ciudades explicas. Porque cada hondipo que he visto tiene una combinación de conaleos. Mientras a mí me parece tener un lugar, una tienda o algún otro lugar. Otros hombres más hombres más superiores. Pero ha sido un problema para mí. Problema para el Consulado de la Ciudad. Considera gente que vive entonces la presión. Personalmente mandarles cartas. Y falta de cooperación en el nivel corporativo. Yo me animaría a que nos demos las cartas que mandó. No sé si... Si es recepción. Qué necesitamos hacer para aumentar esos... Como ser responsables de ellos. Nosotros vamos a mantener la credibilidad para la comunidad. Pero como ustedes son capaces de hacer, que tengo...
Gracias. Vamos a seguir en eso. Y volveremos en contacto con usted.
Vale, gracias. Presidente, miembros. El área que represento los últimos años con... Está proponiendo servicio, sí. Y al mismo tiempo, algunos problemas. El segundo nos vecino... Haciendo cosas que... No saludados. No tienen baños para ir. Y tratamos de probarlos eso. Los vecinos han reclamado repetidamente. Tienen que correr por el lado de Pico. En el proceso de desarrollo de la propiedad... La propiedad de la ciudad de Pico Plaza. Dijeron que van a tener en vista... Un centro de trabajo de trabajo. Y negociamos con los constructores y dijeron así. Vamos a hacer. Es una cosa. Así que nosotros tuviéramos esa responsabilidad. Una sensación al de sus cajas. Digamos que pone su producto dentro de su tienda. También la ten acomodar. A un centro de trabajo. Porque ellos generan ese ambiente en esos... Esos áreas específicas. Una de las cosas que pasan... Podemos controlar el flujo de drogas. De las drogas. En el área. Porque lo que pasa es que los drogados infiltran a los conaleos. Y se deshacen de su producto. Eso se ha descubierto. Si es dentro del lugar. Tal vez como con otros. Entonces claro, van a tener mejor control sobre... Las drogas ilegales. Porque eso es donde pueden hacer. Entonces empiezan a arrestarlos. Los drogados dicen, bueno, solo soy un trabajador. Pero todos saben quiénes son. Entonces es una manera de limpiar el área. En términos de... Deshacer a algunos de los tipos que venden drogas. Pero yo diría que es una buena idea. Debemos requerir... Hacer un mandado. Que los grandes cajas... Una sección de ese desarrollo para los trabajadores. Y eso es lo que está proponiendo.
Creo que eso fue incluido en la motion.
Vale, muchas gracias. Mr. Reyes.
La última vez. Este es un extensione de tres meses, ¿cierto?
Correcto.
Es correcto.
En realidad, sería un extensione de cinco meses.
Five month extension. Colegas, el problema que tenemos es que tenemos fondos para lidiar con estas preocupaciones durante cinco meses. Creo que hay una necesidad de entender que... Tenemos más sucesos de cómo ver estas preocupaciones. Y encontrar una fuente de ingreso para operaciones de estos centros. Estos centros han estado sobreviviendo. Todos sabemos que los fondos bloqueados están disminuyendo a medida que pasan los meses. Después de estos cinco meses, no habrá ningún recurso restante para operar estos centros. Así que nos molesta ver cómo tenemos una relación con los hogares. Alí PD. La comisaria de la ciudad. Tenemos un espacio para operar, para poder financiar las operaciones de estos centros. Después de cinco meses, esto expira, ¿cierto?
Sí, son tres meses desde ahora, así que va a ser septiembre.
Con septiembre, no vamos a tener dinero para poder manejar estos centros en sitios específicos. Entonces, a través de mi colega, el consular, hay un comité. O a través de la vivienda, donde encontramos grantes. O para ver un enfoque creativo con los hogares, con temas de seguridad. Porque afecta a sus negocios. ¿Ha habido pensamiento sobre lo que vamos a hacer después de cinco meses?
Hay fondos reservados en el plan consolidado para la continuación del programa de seis sitios y los tres nuevos que están siendo añadidos. Ese dinero está ahí para la continuación de los sitios existentes. Habrá un RFP que regresará en las próximas tres semanas al comité ACD. Y ese RFP seleccionará nuevos proveedores. Para llevar el programa a cabo durante el resto del año consolidado. Que nos llevará a marzo.
Yo sé que deberíamos. Desde el punto de vista de los hombres y mujeres de la ciudad. Que para mí... Que considera que hay un problema aquí. Generalmente de criminal, no estamos seguros cómo llevarlo. Cómo controlarlo. Hay un nexus de fondos del programa, de relación con los hogares. Me gustaría sugerir que quizás veamos... Enfrentando a la policía. ¿Hay alguna manera de hacerlo con esto? ¿O es algo que hacemos con el programa?
No hay nuevos fondos añadidos al RFP. Los fondos presupuestarios, si se mantienen a través del proceso presupuestario municipal, serían iguales a lo que hemos operado en el pasado. Alrededor de $160,000 por sitio. Si supieramos tomarle alguna parte de eso, reduciría la cantidad de servicio que las agencias podrían proporcionar a los trabajadores sin añadir más fondos. Pero podemos negociar eso con el Alí PD para determinar si podría haber algo colaborativo que no requiera más financiación.
Eso sería, creo, un gran enfoque para un problema real. No podemos seguir en ese camino. Son problemas reales y podemos llevar eso a la vida. Con el tiempo, tal vez pueda venir con más enfoques y soluciones. Gracias.
Vale.
Gracias, señor presidente. Gracias a la presencia de la lista. Sin ninguno, por favor, cerrad la lista. Por favor, cerrad la lista y voten.
15, sí.
Está aprobado. El próximo asunto.
I don't know. Entonces llamamos al presidente de la ciudad, Holden.
Mr. Holden.
Presidente, me gustaría hacer un reporte 61. Creo que 62 también. Que no puede ser acerca de transferir esa responsabilidad. Desde el oficio de finanzas y los deberes de responsabilidad de administrar las responsabilidades de gestión de riesgos de la comisaria de la ciudad. Y transferir de la oficina de finanzas los deberes involucrados en el desarrollo, administración y seguridad de los trabajadores al personal del departamento. Son cambios enormes aquí. Y creo que... El charter, la orden que adoptamos debía reportarle al mánago y al consular cada treinta días. ¿Qué es lo que está pasando? No sé. Por tanto, respecto a eso. ¿Por qué hacemos un cambio?
Eso será aceptado. Señor presidente. Dos concuerdos.
Sí, en cuanto a la gestión de riesgos. Quiero hablar con el director de gestión de riesgos, Tom Coltes. El personal departamento hablará con él. El trasferir la función de seguridad del oficio de finanzas al personal departamento. Había una recomendación durante el proceso presupuestario de transferir riesgos de gestión de riesgos de la oficina de finanzas al CEO. Si recuerdan, el riesgo de gestión de riesgos había sido el CEO durante muchos años. Y de hecho, yo argumenté en el tiempo de la recomendación de transferir al CEO que era una acción inapropiada. Dado nuestros responsabilidades financieras. Y el beneficio de tener una función de gestión de riesgos con tu personal presupuestario. El beneficio que provee de la ciudad. Como parte del presupuesto. Su comité de finanzas ha pedido que el tribunal del Distrito reportara. Creo que son treinta o sesenta días. Sobre el desarrollo de un plan estratégico. Y cómo podemos mejorar el programa de gestión de riesgos del Distrito trabajando más fuertemente no solo el tribunal del Distrito, sino también todos los departamentos. El tribunal del Distrito ya ha contactado con nuestro oficio. Y empezar ese proceso. Hablé con el director de gestión ayer y le pregunté... Empezar a programar a los miembros del tribunal del Distrito, pero también a otros partes interesadas. Incluyendo personal de diferentes departamentos. Ver cómo mejoramos el programa de gestión de riesgos.
¿El rollo de gestión de riesgos y el personal departamento? ¿La responsabilidad y el deber de personal departamento?
Antes de ser el oficio de finanzas, el riesgo de gestión de riesgos estaba en el CEO. Puede que estés refiriéndose a la seguridad. Tom, para hablar de cómo creemos que un aspecto importante del programa de seguridad es tener un programa de seguridad robusto que lleva a la transferencia de seguridad al personal.
Transferencia de seguridad al personal. La seguridad había estado en el departamento desde que he estado en el estado de Los Ángeles. Hasta hace tres años. O transferido al departamento de finanzas. Esto mueve la regla de los departamentos de personal. Cuando nos los podemos poner juntos con la compensación de trabajadores y nuestra función de tratamiento para aparecer. Como trabajar en seguridad. El diferente de los y compensación de trabajadores.
¿Cómo hacemos para asegurar que algunos empleados... Le están diciendo que tienen la verdad? ¿Alguien investiga? ¿Quién es responsable?
Eso sería el tribunal del Distrito.
¿Alguien investiga?
Bueno, tienen dentro. El foco en investigar es parte de las funciones durante el proceso presupuestario. Por supuesto, fue poder añadir dinero al tribunal del Distrito. Para la fiscalía de la ciudad. Para fortalecer el programa de seguridad. Recibieron dinero para el equipo, incluyendo algunos investigadores. Y el equipo legal.
Bueno, recuerdo que hace cinco años que estábamos viendo fraude. Y emitimos un contrato. Que fue el número uno que... Para investigar fraude. Y tratar... Controlar el incremento de las monedas que pagamos. Fragueando. Donde los empleados están haciendo declaraciones sobre condiciones relacionadas con su trabajo. Que no eran verdaderas. ¿Quién es responsable de eso? ¿Quién es responsable para eso? El personal.
En el personal departamento, tenemos una compañía que asegura que los impuestos sean apropiados. También tenemos la habilidad para contrarrestar investigadores. Que nos dé una agente subalante y trabajar como fiscal de la ciudad. Para mover eso adelante para la persecución. En términos de un caso específico que tenía la responsabilidad de eso. No estoy seguro, a menos que sea una revisión.
¿Cómo investigar? ¿Dónde hay ese registro? Tiene encontrar números de investigadores. Que algunas de esas... Que manda decir cuál es el éxito. De alguno. Y hacer eso.
El éxito en fraude está en dos áreas. Una primera, donde investigamos un caso y podemos llevar el caso a un final. Porque la declaración de fraude. Y eso detiene el caso de ir adelante. Y tener impuestos médicos adicionales en nuestro caso. Además, el fraude también es exitoso. Las investigaciones también son exitosas. Donde podemos mover de una manera disponente contra el empleado. Que va a poner el tono en la organización y tomamos en serio el fraude. Y prosecuimos. El último área es con el tribunal del Distrito. Donde trabajan con el fiscal del distrito y el departamento de la seguridad. Para prosecuir a nivel criminal. Y en ese área, hemos sido exitosos a un nivel limitado. El nivel de cooperación que nos gustaría ver en un nivel de avanzada con el fiscal del distrito no ha sido donde nos gustaría ver.
Estoy presentando estas preguntas porque una vez creí que el director de finanzas era responsable del departamento de la treasury y lo dividieron. ¿Lo entiendo mal? ¿Es correcto?
Correcto.
Y asignan algunas funciones en el director de finanzas, que es algo que nunca se creó. Y luego, por supuesto, están cambiando todo de nuevo. ¿Crees que todavía necesitamos al director de finanzas o volver al oficio? ¿O al director de treasury? ¿El personal lo mismo? ¿Decides no responder esa pregunta?
El oficio de finanzas, como stated in the charter, tiene una responsabilidad principal para cobrar impuestos y otros ingresos. Que el Distrito tiene derecho. En ese sentido, han hecho algunos compromisos significativos y creo que están haciendo un buen trabajo. Primero, los dueños del oficio de treasury del oficio de finanzas. Creo que es una decisión sound dar a nuestros dueños la capacidad y la autoridad para mejorar nuestro portfolio. El año pasado, nuestro dueño, Joy, ha hecho algunos cambios excepcionales. Y con esos cambios, ha hecho bien para nuestro programa de inversión. Hemos visto algunos beneficios positivos. 益处的收益益处的收益益处的收益益处的收益益处的收益
Presidente, quiero terminar diciendo que antes discutimos este asunto en otro... De parte de todo, de parte de información, señor Camilo, es que... Ejas y... Y esos fueron los contratos personales, fueron investigadores, investigaron. Y nunca tuvimos un reporte de éxito en el éxito. De esos investigaciones. Lo que pagamos es lo que hagan. No querían esto nada, no saben, ustedes tienen... Van a compartir con ustedes, son fecha más adelante, pero... Pero vale la pena saber. Lo que quisiera decir es dónde fue la persecución. Debate tremendo y no ayudó a ninguna parte. En términos de información. Competencia conmigo. Gracias.
Gracias, señor presidente. ¿Señor Zani?
Señor Fujioke. No se acerque demasiado, señor. Gracias. Sé que el personal está tomando este asunto con la parte del personal seriamente. Estamos ganando cooperación de UFL, de PPL. Y tratando de mover para adelante para decirles esas preocupaciones consideradas. Holden, atrajado. ANRP. Que está circulando, eso es base aprobado ya en este asunto. El RFP. Él tiene respuestas que están entrando en el proceso. Intentar dar un acuerdo con... En términos de contrato que estarán trayendo al Consulado de la Ciudad. Entiendo que... Eso no cuesta para la ciudad el recupero del proceso.
El RFP fue diseñado a no costos. El RFP. El único vendedor que respondió ha hecho algunos costos. Que son reembolsos para viajes y gastos de vida. Así que si podemos llegar a un acuerdo con ellos, puede haber algo de costos. Que se remosaría básicamente. Pero en términos de la estructura del contrato. El contrato encima. El dinero pagado al contratista. No sería pagado en los últimos.
Y el Departamento de Policía tiene un detalle. Que investiga incidentes. El tribunal del Distrito tiene investigadores que investigan. ¿Hay otros departamentos dentro de la familia del Distrito? Que han investigado este tipo de actividades.
Tenemos la habilidad de contratar investigadores en casos específicos. Pero, además de nosotros, el Departamento de Policía. No creo que nadie más tenga. En términos de investigaciones profundas, cosas así. No creo que haya demás.
Entiendo que el número de 142 millones de dólares se anticipa. Este año fiscal.
142 millones.
Eso ha subido a 70 millones en 1999. O 1998. Aproximadamente. Realmente creo que... 92. Entonces, 97 hasta el presente. Ha sido de 92 millones de dólares aproximadamente. A 142. Claramente, la modificación tiene que tomar lugar. ¿Crees que va a pasar en los próximos meses? Vamos a tener una línea. Creo que vamos a tener un contrato para arriba o para abajo. Un grupo potencial de regreso al Consulado dentro de un mes. También, los que reconocen eso. Están con el PP, muy cooperativos. Y tratar de poner final alguna de las... Problemas que tienen. También con la FCIU, han sido apoyados y también UFL.
En esto, solo hay un aspecto de abordar los problemas asociados a este programa. Una campaña legislativa muy agresiva también necesita en cumplir algunas reformas legales.
Reformas legales para este programa.
No solo aquí en la ciudad, sino en todo el estado. Gracias. Gracias, señor presidente. Otros miembros. Sin ninguno, por favor, cerrad la lista. Por favor, cerrad la lista y voten.
15, sí.
Estos son los números 61 y 62. ¿Señor Mr. Kowski?
Señor presidente, miembros. Me gustaría pedir reconsideración de la agenda de Friday, los números 13, 14 y 15. Estos fueron los ordenos que trataban de la carrera de speed racing y el ban de 50 cal. Los adoptamos 11 a 0, pero tenían que ir más de una semana porque no teníamos 12. Teníamos 15 miembros hoy. Y el consulado estaba de total apoyo a todas estas tres ordenes. Creo que cuanto más pronto sean, mejor. Es una buena cosa. Mi motion es que movamos a reconsiderar los números 13, 14 y 15. ¿Hay un segundo?
Un segundo. Adam Clark, por favor, cerrad la lista. Por favor, cerrad la lista y voten.
15, sí.
Y tenemos 15 miembros. Vamos a abrir una vez más esos números. Cerrad la lista y voten.
15, sí.
Esos ordenos están aprobados.
Espera, para adelante, por favor.
El próximo asunto.
El número 63 fue llamado por el vicepresidente de la ciudad.
Señor Vice.
Me gustaría hacer un reporte del departamento. Si pudiera, cerrar mi tiempo y ver más.
Buenas tardes, miembros del Consulado.
Buenos días, miembros.
Grace Harper, Building and Safety. Quizás voy a empezar. El reporte que tenemos, creo que cuando dejamos el sitio el día de hoy el departamento iba a regresar y ver los varios permisos y ver qué se transpiró durante los últimos años desde el quiebro de Northridge. En 1994, 121, cuatro días después del quiebro. El edificio estaba retenido con ningún daño. El siguiente permiso activo fue un informe abierto. Parece ser una demanda en 1996 por reparación de pantalla, reparación de balcón y cierre de los balcones. En 2001, en septiembre, se presentó un informe de soja. No sabemos, el departamento no sabe si fue una reparación proactiva o si había un problema estructural en ese momento. Pero fue para reparación seismica. Fue el informe de soja para el permiso. Para los permisos de edificio para reparación seismica. Y renovación del edificio. Se vieron varias inspecciones. El dueño en ese momento parece ser el mismo dueño. La empresa, no tiene el nombre de una persona, pero la empresa. Que regresó en 2003. En ese momento, no terminaron el trabajo. Preguntaron por una extensión de tiempo. El trabajo nunca comenzó. Y evidentemente, la justificación que dieron en ese momento era la falta de financiación. Y no obtuvieron financiación. Se obtuvieron permisos menores por un trabajo eléctrico. Pero no hubo trabajo realizado. La última inspección fue realizada el 2 de febrero de 2002. Los notas de inspección muestran que no se comenzó el trabajo en ese momento. Inspección de edificio y seguridad. Porque los permisos se obtuvieron para comenzar el trabajo para una reparación seismica en la que no se realizó el trabajo.
¿Ese es el total de los reportes de los departamentos? ¿Tienen algo que añadir? Soy Tom McGill, del Distrito de Los Ángeles. Y este es el señor... También es el departamento de viviendas. Que ha coordinado con los habitantes después de que el edificio fuera vacío. ¿Y hay algo que quieran añadir? ¿La reportera de Harvard? No en lo que respecta a las analisis estructurales. En términos de la situación de los habitantes, ¿qué podemos decir? Sí, podemos dar información sobre el estado de los habitantes. Actualmente, hay 29 familias residentes en Santa Monica. El dueño del edificio ha fundado ese paralelismo. El personal de Los Ángeles también está trabajando con... El personal de Los Ángeles. ¿Es la corporación de viviendas de Los Ángeles? Que usamos para terminar largos apartamentos. Para la gente que está desplazada. ¿Hemos proporcionado la asistencia de relocation que el Consulado autorizó? Estamos trabajando con el mánago. Checamos esta mañana. El Consulado no ha recibido la firma que necesitamos. Necesitamos la firma del mánago. Recibimos la firma del... Pasamos el número 23. Creo que hay una concurrencia del mánago. Que tiene que anular. ¿Sabemos cuándo el mánago va a firmar esto? Para que los habitantes puedan recibir la asistencia de relocation. Checamos esta mañana a las 10. El Consulado no lo ha recibido. ¿Alguien? ¿Alguien conoce a alguien en el mánago y en las alcaldías? ¿Alguien? ¿Alguien conoce a alguien en el mánago y en las alcaldías?
Señor Vice. Entiendo cómo estás. Si quieres, podemos ver el archivo y obtener la firma.
Eso sería genial. Así que esos folk pueden tener esa asistencia. ¿Volver a la pregunta de seguridad del edificio? Quizás esto sea para viviendas. Solo dime cómo va. Hipotéticamente, digamos que el dueño de un edificio quiere renovar o deshacer edificios heridos. Que el dueño de un edificio den noticia a los habitantes que el dueño quiere renovar o deshacer el edificio. Quiere intentar mover a los habitantes de relocation. Ahora hay un moratorium en el Distrito de Los Ángeles. ¿Es cierto? Hay un moratorium para una renovación mayor. No puede hacerlo ahora. No puede hacerlo ahora. El minor está diciendo que no. Necesitas pasar por el proceso de obtener una excepción. ¿Un moratorium? Sí. Vale. Entonces... La pregunta es... ¿Cómo llega este dueño a ir de otra ruta? Getting su propia inspección realizada. Y getting the building red tagged. Y nos está dando sorpresa. ¿Tienes algo que iluminar?
No, miembro del Consulado. Esa es una opción para el dueño de contratar un ingeniero privado. Él es un problema. Creemos, no he verificado, pero creemos que es el mismo de Belair Equity Incorporated, el edificio ahora que posee el edificio entonces. Así que en ese momento, no recibieron financiación. Así que en este punto, parece que han comenzado el proceso para intentar reparar el edificio. Usar un enfoque proactivo para reparar el edificio. En este punto, no tenemos una conclusión válida. ¿Puedes hacer algo más de manera de... Para que sepamos cómo llegó la situación hasta este punto? Básicamente, entre febrero de 2002 y ahora. Ese es el periodo que tiene, ¿verdad? Normalmente, ningún departamento hace una investigación forense. Sería parte del dueño contra el ingeniero profesional que nos daría documentos. A structural analysis for their determination as to what caused the problem.
Have you asked the owner for that information yet?
No, we have not.
Are you going to?
Van a serlo.
We could.
Podríamos.
What normally we do is write an order to comply to repair the building. In this case, there's a hazard, so they would have to repair the building.
Okay, I would also like you to ask the owner. I'll do this by way of emotion. That's what it takes, so I can just ask you to do it. Ask the owner for any all information relating to the structure of the building and its condition between Feb. 02 and present. Because we need to understand when did this problem develop? When was it discovered? And when did the owner make the decision to get the private engineer? If you could get that information for us and report back to the Rules Committee in two weeks. All right? I would appreciate that. Councilman Wise, we do have, with the order that we issued, in the language of the order, it has required the owner to provide plans and permits to repair the building. That order was issued with the red tag? Yes, on June 5th. And when is the due date of that? There's no due date, it just has to be done before the building can be reoccupied. Okay, well, but given... Well, that's a catch-22. Because it may be that this owner never wants the building to be reoccupied. I think you need to put a timeline on that. I'd like to have an important two weeks in this Rules Committee. Uh... That information should be very easily obtainable. It should be in the front of the owner's private cabinet.
We have all soils report, we can look through and see if there was any analysis done at that time. And we can look through the plans to see where those areas were that they were trying to support. So that's a beginning. We'll work with housing.
And I think the owner has representation. If you could work with the owner's representative to get that information from this Rules Committee in two weeks. I would appreciate that. And you could also give me an update as to when the mayor has signed the matter so that these tenants can get their relocation assistance. I appreciate that as well.
Certainly.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wise. And without objection, we'll consider the matter as amended by the additional request of Mr. Wise. Are the members wishing to be heard on the 6th of June? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
That is approved.
Está aprobado.
Next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council agenda.
Put the common piece for today's meeting, the council call for it. Ms. Glenda Smith? Mr. Parks?
No, Park.
Fourth with on 57 and 58. Ms. Smith?
Sr. Smith.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
This is your time.
Good morning. My name is Glenda Smith, and I'm here to represent my son Kawan and other Kawans who have died as a result of gang violence. I'm here to introduce Urban Rap Workshop to the city council. Urban Rap Workshop is an anti-gang, intervention prevention organization designed to promote self-esteem, self-worth, literacy to at-risk children ages 12 to 18. I'm kind of nervous, I'm just gonna read from what I wrote. We traveled throughout the greater Los Angeles area, conducting these positive workshops in libraries, art organizations, theaters. Uh, juvenile detention centers. Um... And we give away music instruments to students participating in our after-school program. Our programs are free, safe, and supervised. Student registration is required. Urban Rap Workshop enables students to express themselves creatively and encourage them to perform in art genres. In return, they learn self-sufficiency and social skills that will allow them to be productive citizens achieving reachable goals. Since 1998, we have successfully conducted 30 workshops. Our teen-friendly program is free, educational, and engaging. Teen popularity. However, we need more support from the city councils because we travel throughout all 15 districts. And because we're getting so popular, sometimes we have to turn down requests. And I'm here today to ask for the city councils' support so that I will not have to turn down any kid from any part of our community. Each of you have been given an information packet. Please review it at leisure. You are more than welcome to come visit one of our upcoming workshops. I think the next one is next week, next Wednesday, at North Hollywood Press Library. Please be a part of what's leading the team team and free after-school program. We needed your help to keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. First. We will discuss this conclusion public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Proximo asunto, siempre está ahí, año 2023. Creo que estamos en la presa de servicio de vida para el Consilio. Está presente para el concejal. Wise es segunda para el concejal. Claro que el fiscal va a hablar de las investigaciones. Está circulada como estamos hablando. Señor presidente, voy a leer el recuerdo de las investigaciones para considerar. En junio 6 del 2003, fue un que entró a un edificio, fueron las 14 unidades de descomodaciones en la Golden Avenue, en Los Ángeles. Con recuerdos, algunos hemos dado temporales viviendas con familias, pero está necesidad de asistencia para el reemplazamiento de viviendas. Este gobierno debe determinar primero la necesidad para tomarse una unidad y le pedir la atención del Consilio. Después de poner la agenda, si tal, la investigación se ha hecho, la petición que el fiscal otorga. La locación de los... Muchas gracias a los que les han salido en el asunto. En las investigaciones, no hay ninguno en la lista. Lo sabes, si vas en la lista, algo es el voto, 15 sí. Estos están aprobados, el tercer número frente a nosotros. Es reconocido, la esperación presente, colegas, como todos ustedes saben. Viene a salir a las 4 de la tarde, un aeroplano. El avión cayó en un edificio de apartamentos en mi distrito. Yo estaba ahí, una hora después del avión y los bomberos, se les respondió, que yo vi, que respondieron. Estaba el... Extralimente gente que llegaron ahí. Literalmente de minutos. Massivamente de minutos. Hicieron trabajo. Habían de la gente que había brincado el edificio. Poniendo el fuego, se apagaron, alguien empezó a unirse junto. Lo lograron eso, fue un trabajo extraordinario. Así se sabe que era tanta la que fue, así serán los hombres, los bomberos, el departamento de policía. Cosas que podrían ser muy peores, muy rápidamente, y no pasó. Cerca de por su ruido, es nuestra respuesta en medio de todo. Esta es una unidad de 14 unidades. Una, el que no trágicamente perdió su vida en el choque. El otro, el que no, algunos han sido las hembras todos sabes. He tenido una discusión, ha sido el comité, ha presentado el comité acerca de... El rol que juega el Red Cross. Es importante que nosotros, que la ciudad... Sienta lo cual, lo que yo que existe dando de que la... Y que la ciudad provea. La cantidad de asistencia para jugar a esta gente. Está proveída. De lo que verdaderamente parecerá un acto de Dios. Extraordinariamente disruptor en sus vidas. Estos piden un voto de 10.
Thank you, Mr. Wise.
Gracias, Wise, otro nuevo que es encabezador, especial uno. Señor Bueno, abra la lista. Abra la lista, le doy el voto.
15 eyes.
Está aprobado para adelante, por favor.
Next item.
Proximo asunto.
Council has the motions for posting a referral. There are excuses on the desk, Councilmember Groh is requested to be excused Tuesday, June 17th, for city business that needs council policy. Councilmember Henry is requested to be excused Wednesday, June 11th, till 12:15. For city business that also needs council policy. And that person is a citizen.
Thank you very much, members. Are there any announcements today? Any announcements?
Algunos anuncios, señor Zine.
You have an announcement?
Tiene el anuncio.
Something special is going on this evening.
Algo especial es ir en esta noche, va a ir de San Fernando. Para una casa. Y yo creo que es una de los... Roasters, creo que es Roaster. Por el DAB, vamos a hacer el roast. El número 18 es el... En nuestro país lo vamos a hacer en el DAB, en el Hotel Mario. Donde voy a estar, nuestro presidente, el jefe de los Sloski. Señor Burt Bachmann, y el señor Richmond. Entonces voy a venir mañana, que madre de... Estoy sadame, iba a ser una cosa, gracias por ayudarme de la noche que le miro. Dónde empezamos?
Other announcements?
Yo quiero felicitar a señor Zine. Para ser línea, tiene que ser, un peor para una... Por DAB, es una enfermedad que... Primera doctora, una tracción, y la gente... Un orson u otra no sabe que la tienen. Hasta que me tardé, pero señor Zine... Está enfrente de esta cuestión y dos casos de sangre. Pero la vida se puede dejar que usted sea un peor para una buena causa. Está tratando de llegar ahí, y tirarle ahí.
Other announcements? If not, please rise for journey motion.
Anuncios de término.
You can ask the audience to please rise. If I can ask for one of the audience to please rise for journey motion. Thank you very much.
Gracias.
Ms. Collette.
Thank you. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Irene Kishi, who retired as the DWP Board Secretary on November 30th, 1998. And this past May 27th, just recently passed away after being diagnosed with brain cancer five months ago. Irene was a longtime employee of the Commission Office. She was given an emergency appointment as Board Secretary in July 1994, when her predecessor retired. She started at DWP in 1966 as a clerk stenographer, and she worked her way up. She started working in the Commission Office as a senior clerk stenographer in 1989, and then became the Secretary to the Water and Power Commission in '95 and retired at the end of '98. She survived by her husband Ted Kishi and her chosen Debbie and Kyle Tackenah.
Ms. Gro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Cigafredo Diaz. He passed away on Friday, May 30th. He was a decorated veteran of World War II. Served in the Asiatic Pacific Arena and worked as an auto mechanic for over 40 years. Was married in Glassell Park and lived in the same house for 50 years. I'm introducing this today because his daughter Martha Gutierrez is a neighborhood prosecutor in my district out of North Hollywood Division. Has been a key supporter of activities in my district. She's also survived by his wife, Luis Diaz, his son, excuse me, Fred Diaz, and five grandchildren, and ask that we adjourn his memory.
Seconded by Mr. LaBarnes. Other tributes? Mr. Wise?
Your Wise. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn today in memory of those individuals who lost their lives in that plane crash on Friday. And there were five individuals that had been confirmed to have lost their lives in that crash. Tipla Rice, who was 76 years old, a devout Orthodox Jew, who was a watch repairman, who appears to have been the only resident in the apartment to have lost his life. There were four people on the plane. Pilot of the plane, Jeffrey Siegel, from Santa Monica. His niece, a young school writer, Jessica Kaplan. And two individuals from Marina Del Rey, Anthony and Bonnie Benetieri. All of them tragically lost their lives on Friday afternoon.
All members and colleagues, I do have two rituals. The first, that we adjourn in memory of Socorro Avila, who passed away on June 7th, just this last weekend. Socorro is the mother of someone many of us here know, part of the city family, Al Avila. Socorro was born in San Francisco on June 26th, 1931, and moved to Brooklyn in the early 1950s, where she was a homemaker, devoted mother, and a member of Mary Mathielle Church. She was well-known and respected by many, always lending a helping hand to family and friends in need. And she will be greatly missed as a wife, mother, grandmother, and to everyone in the community whom she touched. I ask that we adjourn in her memory. In addition, colleagues, there's times when some of these losses hit even close at home. Today, I ask that we adjourn in memory of David Lennon, the 35-year-old cousin of my chief of staff, Ronnie Kayden. David Lennon passed away last Wednesday, June 4th, from injuries he suffered in a car accident. In addition to connection to our city family here, David Lennon is one of our national colleagues. Since 2001, David has served on the Ferndale Michigan City Council. As the youngest member of that council, David forged relations and successfully championed several causes benefiting working families and the economic redevelopment of Ferndale. As with many cities not as large as Los Angeles, Ferndale has a part-time city council. Nonetheless, David moved forward on a successful agenda for his city as a part-time member while working as a financial executive at General Motors. In addition, David enjoyed life, placing a value on spending time with his loved ones, either at sporting events, traveling, or simply hanging out with a very tight-knit family. But the most tragic part of David's death was that he was just a month away from being married. The loss of his promising young man is difficult to comprehend and certainly difficult to accept. But in the end, we can take this time to appreciate that he did accomplish much in such a short time and to think about those things for which he placed such great value. Family, community, integrity, and happiness. Funeral services for David were held in Ferndale this past Monday, and more than 800 people were in attendance. David is survived by his mother, Nancy Lennon, his fiancee Kimberly, his brothers Mike, Timmy, and BJ, sisters Sherry, Lori, and a long list of in-laws, nieces, nephews, extended family members, and friends. He will be dearly missed. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yo su termino.
Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.